Okay, please be seated, everyone. We'll start this public hearing. And I get the, there's a camera on, the camera upstairs? Can you, you can hear me, I assume? So the camera is on? Is that correct? Yes. I don't see a green or red light, so I don't know. All right. It's echoing, but I'll speak as softly as I can. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read the legal notice for this public hearing. Town of East Hattam Board of Finance Public Hearing, Nathan Hill Ray High School Auditorium, today, tonight, Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. It's also live via YouTube. The Board of Finance will hold a public hearing to review the 2025-2026 proposed budget for Board of Selectmen and Board of Education expenses and revenues. The public hearing will be held at the Nathan Hill Ray High School in the auditorium. The public hearing will also be broadcast via YouTube Live. A citizen's guide with information on the proposed budget will be provided as an insert in the April 24th East Hattam News. All budget documents are available on the town's website at www.easthatten.org, and copies are also available in the town clerk's office. If not attending in person to ask questions or give comments prior to and during the public hearing, please email at budget dot questions at easthatten.org. The hearing may be viewed at https://www.youtube.com forward slash channels forward slash, a lot of forward slashes, UCLZQ dash M A T O K Y six F W eight two nine C six M B A question mark view V I E W underscore as equals, equal sign subscriber. Please call the Finance Office at 860-873-5022 if you have any questions regarding the budget. Dated this 24th day of April 2025, Todd Gellston, Todd H. Gellston, Board of Finance Chairman. I'll say once again, good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Gellston. I serve as Chairman of the East Hattam Board of Finance. Let's all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags might open here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. On behalf of my fellow Board of Finance members, I welcome you and thank you for coming to this public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Seated at this table are people dedicated to serve East Hattam in essential capacities with the common task of using East Hattam taxpayer funds for the benefit of the East Hattam residents. I ask that they identify themselves, starting at the end of this head table at my far left.
Teresa De Brito, Superintendent of Schools. Patty Stricker, Chairman of the Board of Education.
Here. Harvey Thomas, Board of Finance.
Joe Corbett. Phil Barney, Board of Finance.
Maureen Gough, Board of Finance.
Valerie Bellis, Finance Director.
Irene Haynes, First Selectman.
Thank you very much. The purpose, again, of tonight's public hearing is to review the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget before taking it to a town meeting and then to a townwide referendum. The difference between the budget being proposed tonight and the budget proposed at the April 8th public hearing is that tonight's budget reduces the cut to the Board of Education from $600,000 down to $500,000. With this proposed $100,000 drop in the cut, we propose an increase in the utilization of the unassigned fund balance by $100,000 to a total of $2.6 million to be transferred from the unassigned fund balance. This proposed action enables tonight's proposed mill rate increase of 1.69 to be the same as it was at the April 8th hearing. Also, we're not changing the capital budget of 1.3 million. The budget development process for the next fiscal year started late last fall with committee meetings in the Education District and board, commission, and department meetings in our town government. Tonight, with this public hearing, we are near the end of the budget development process. After this public hearing comes a town meeting and then the budget referendum. Speaking on behalf of the Board of Finance, that's good, it's not echoing. Speaking on behalf of the, it's on. It's working, thank you, Jim. It's very wise. Okay. Speaking on behalf of the Board of Finance, I sincerely thank all members of East Hattam's boards, commissions, and departments for their hard work, careful thought, open communication, and working together throughout this entire process. I think, as you probably all agree, developing a responsible budget requires significant dedicated effort, wise consideration, and a willingness to listen and compromise with some passion sprinkled into the discussions. It has never been an easy task to balance the needs of a small town like East Hattam while being mindful of our fiscal responsibility. We recognize that it is impossible to satisfy every need and want. Needs have a higher priority, of course. However, to be successful, we all have worked together to create and develop a budget that provides for our town's highest priorities and demonstrates our shared commitment to our town of East Hattam. At this time, I'd like to ask the first select woman to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and coming out to this budget hearing. Many of you are here for the second time. And this is important to note, this is a process, a process that happens every year, and we asked for the town's input as we began this process back in December and January with our first budget meetings. To date, we are well up to close to 30 posted meetings regarding this year's budget, and your input and questions and concerns are all part of that process. This year has been particularly challenging, one financially, as we navigate the impact of the national economic factors that are well outside any of our control. But more importantly this year, our grand list has taken a huge hit. Due to the change in the motor vehicle calculations per the state of Connecticut, our grand list value is experiencing a decrease of over $17 million for motor vehicles. Personal property tax and real estate property tax has made up for some of it, but still the grand list decrease ends up to being almost 1% of the budget, or $8.5 million. We started this process basically 1% in the hole. Nonetheless, we have persisted and have presented a general government budget that maintains our town's financial stability. Financial stability for our town is a journey, not a destination, and it takes constant vigilance. The positive results of our efforts can be seen in many areas, most notably in consistently being under budget from year to year. Each project, for example, although allowed for in the budget, is streamlined and carefully executed, using minimal dollars or alternative money-saving project execution. The town has moved forward on many projects, and we will continue to invest in our number of economic development initiatives which will impact our grand list in a positive way. This positive impact will be evident when people and businesses come here because East Hattam is a great place to live, work, and play. This year's budget strives to maintain and improve a level of services in this community that they expect from their government. Priorities include our public safety sector, our fire, police, EMS, and animal control, and our infrastructure, our roads and bridges. And finally, to diversify our grand list, we must invest in ourselves. We have some major projects ahead, our new road reclamation plan, which brings all our roads to better and safer condition, our Mudus Firehouse, town-owned fiber, and a new library. These projects are investments in our future, and as we continue to work on developing the East Hattam Village and our Mudus Master Plan, private investors will take notice that East Hattam is a place to invest in because we are investing in ourselves. I'm looking forward to sharing more details of these projects as they unfold. I'd also like to make a special point here. This budget and the monies needed to execute, all that we do here comes from a variety of sources. Approximately 25% comes from the state, local fees, special donation funds, and investment income. But the other 75% comes from our taxpayers. Many of those taxpayers are here tonight. Our students, our teachers, our administrators who live in town are here. Many of our town employees are here, and many live and work in town. The other taxpayers in the room might be volunteers who volunteer in the town. And there are still others that are here just because they are taxpayers and have a vested interest in what's going on with our budget. What I'd also like to mention are those who are not here. The seniors that don't own a car and are living on a very fixed income, they are not here. There may be some who aren't here because they think the taxes are fine and gladly pay what we pay just to live in such a beautiful place. There are others that are just plain busy or listening from home. What we need to make sure is, is that we pass a responsible and a fair budget for all the taxpayers living in East Hattam, all ages, all incomes, all present and not present, all voices heard and unheard. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Next, Board of Education, Patty?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight and working through the budget process for next year. The Board of Education did speak at the Board of Finance meeting on April 8th, and we reviewed our capital plan and our operating budget. We also answered questions posed by the Board of Finance. As Todd noted, the Board of Education budget was reduced by $500,000, and our capital budget will be $650,000. Following the April 8th meeting, the Board of Education held a special Board of Education meeting to discuss how line items in the budget would be adjusted to absorb the decrease in the funding. I want to share that information with you this evening so you know more about the Board of Education budget. In response to the Board of Finance meeting's comments and concerns, the Board of Education has made the following staffing changes. We've eliminated one science teacher from the high school, bringing the total count of science teachers at the high school to three. The superintendent is working with the high school administration and science teachers to ensure that every grade has science courses available and all standards for science continue to be met. We eliminated one French teacher and one French course from the middle school, bringing the total foreign language teachers at the middle school to one. It is important to note that Spanish and French will be offered at the high school, and in addition, there are opportunities for independent learning courses for various world languages. We eliminated the compliance position at central office. There is a new state mandate for our compliance position at all schools in Connecticut, and the Board is working on making sure that we are compliant with this important law. We eliminated world language teacher and the program at the elementary school. The teacher currently in this role will be moved to another position that is currently vacant. Again, the superintendent will be working with the administration and the teachers to see how we can incorporate world language into other learning. We also eliminated a cafeteria worker. We are facing a deficit in food service this year due to the number of meals being purchased, and we anticipate we may need to add funds from another line item to cover the cost of those next year as well. The Board also made some line item adjustments to special education, as we had that budgeted below 0% increase, and we will need to add money to that line item so we can cover the needs of our special education students. As in any year, the line item for special education can change dramatically and quickly. The full budget is available on our district web website, as it always has been, www.easthatten schools.org. I would like to remind the public that our budget is complex and has various sections for each school, system-wide and district-wide. Should anyone wish to review the budget, our superintendent has an open-door policy to meet with members of the community. We do ask that you make an appointment, as schedules are very tight. Capital was also adjusted to fit into the $650,000 allotment. The following projects will take place. Exterior lighting at the elementary school and high school, radon testing as mandated by the state of Connecticut, completing a sidewalk project for the broken areas at the elementary school, completing the ceiling and exterior washing of the middle school, replacing broken tiles in the middle school cafeteria and the front hallway, elementary school cameras, middle school and high school cloud camera updates, security-wide network switches, and a BAS switches and control system updates for the high school. Security software updates needed to be, need to be updated as well, and that is covered. It should be noted that the Board is currently $10,373 short in their capital allotment to complete these projects, and we're working with the Board of Finance on using the Board of Education reserves for this. The following capital improvement plans will not be completed this year and will remain on the long-range plans. High school ceiling tile replacement for stained and broken tiles, the system-wide interior paint, which is usually an annual maintenance for painting the hallways. High school carpet and floor replacement will not take place this year. We will not be buying a lawnmower. The playgrounds at the elementary school for K1 and the elementary school 2, 3 playgrounds will not be worked on this year as well. We do understand that they do get quite a bit of use from the community and during Little League and on the weekends. The high school courtyard improvements have been delayed. The system-wide modernization of learning furniture, which normally this covers worn-out desks, chairs, and updating the technologies in the classrooms, will not be taking place. System-wide maintenance truck with the plow is being put off, and the high school and the middle school driveway sealing and crack repairs. The Board of Education has asked the Board of Finance to consider adding this into their public works package, as the driveways are owned by the town and should be treated as roads and maintenance. The middle school BAS system for the heating controls has been put on hold. These are the original ones, and they're at the end of their life. The new serving line for the cafeteria at the elementary school to replace the original serving line from 1962 will continue to be on hold. System-wide field improvements, which is a line item to do field improvements on one field per year to avoid costly repairs down the road, has been placed on hold. And the system-wide cafeteria equipment replacements have been placed on hold. So let's hope that a refrigerator or freezer does not go down during the year. Again, I would like to stress that the Board of Education will ask that the items that were eliminated this year remain on the long-range capital, and we'll look at them again next year. In closing, the Board of Education remains committed to high-quality education for all of our students. We remain committed to hiring and retaining high-quality staff at our schools while being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. This public hearing is an opportunity to hear from the taxpayers and residents of East Hattam. We want to hear your comments and answer your questions. We are allowing people to speak for up to three minutes. If you have more questions and comments that go beyond the three minutes, we will allow time for you to speak again later in the public hearing. We want to be sure that everyone has had an opportunity to comment or ask a question. If you have a question or a comment, please step up to the microphones, there's one there, there's one over there, and state your name before speaking. So that being said, who would like to speak?
Good evening. Rosemary Evans, 5 Laurel Cove Road. I'm also the East Hattam Education Association Teacher President. I would like to speak on behalf of the taxpayer. This is one of my favorite ways people want to begin when they want to speak against something in the budget. The truth is, everyone who's going to speak here tonight is a taxpayer, and they all speak on behalf of taxpayers, especially those who agree with us. We are here tonight so the Board of Finance members can hear from the people, the taxpayers, the voters. It is my hope that we are here in good faith and that the kind folks that put themselves out there to be the financial planning heavy lifters for our town are here with open minds and open hearts. I was saddened to hear a town employee make public comments about all the benefits that teachers receive. Teachers are paid an average of 20% less than others with the same education. Teachers are required to have a master's degree to retain certification. Other town employees have no degree requirements and make equal pay to the majority of the teachers. East Hattam teachers are paid less than teachers in every surrounding school system and paid less than every school in our Shoreline Conference except Westbrook. We taxpayers voted for the selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Education members, who we believed we could trust to take care of our best interests. Our Board of Education members are charged with caring for our children, and they do so with passion. Our Board of Finance members are elected, or appointed in one case, to oversee the care of every branch in town, no one branch over another, but to care for each branch with love, care, and responsibility, not an easy task. On Friday, I heard Dr. Miguel Cordona speak. He was a fourth-grade teacher, a school principal, the Commissioner of State of Connecticut Education, and Secretary of Education for our country. He reiterated a statement I heard the previous day, "Good schools make good communities." Three teachers' positions have already been eliminated, which reduce opportunities for our students. But it seems what, this is what some of our residents want. Keep in mind that someday, these children will be sitting on our boards of our town, then we will be under their mercy of their decisions. I hope we will have preserved enough of their educational future so that they are learned and wise enough to take care of us when it's, when their turn comes. It would be wise for us to take care of them now. As a community, we need to vote yes for this budget as it's proposed so we don't lose any more for our children's future. Thank you.
I'm Denise Di Stefano. I live on Town Street in Mudus. If memory serves me, the school was asked to cut $500,000, government 75. Is that true?
That is correct. Seventy-five thousand. Are you referring to the budget that's before us now, or the one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then you are correct.
Okay. I really greatly appreciate the work that the Board of Ed put into making the cuts. I'm heartbroken to hear the cuts that they had to sacrifice for the sake of the budget. But I love all the specificity so that we understand exactly what we're losing. Can we have the same from the town's side?
Is that a question, ma'am?
Yeah.
So you want to see specific cuts, where the cuts are?
So at this time, the, until we actually have a passed budget, I haven't really, you know, specifically came up with the cuts. Right now, we're looking at several different things. We have many things that we do to maintain our buildings, you know, everything from the schoolhouse up in Millington to the municipal office complex, and so some of those projects will have to be put on hold, similar to the way Board of Ed has to. We also look at the, depending on what happens with our health insurance, that will happen. We have a couple of vehicles that won't happen. There's a number of different possibilities, but I haven't, you know, until we have a passed budget, I don't have the exact numbers for you.
I don't understand. You're given a number that you need to cut. They've gone through, itemized everything that needs to be changed. I don't understand why you wouldn't prepare the same info.
Okay, we have $11,000 for the schoolhouse in Millington. We have $2,000 for overtime for grounds. We have $1,500 for the MOC supplies. We have $5,000 for electricity at the MOC. We have $2,500 for propane at the MOC. So these are the things that are on the list if we have to cut the 75. And also, depending on what happens with our health insurance, depends on how many of these cuts that we have to make.
So it sounds like you're suggesting that you don't know if it's 75? Like, I don't understand why you don't have hard numbers.
I have hard numbers, but I don't have hard numbers for our health insurance yet.
Okay.
So once those hard numbers comes in for our health insurance amount, then we'll know what we need to cut further than the health insurance.
Okay. It's confusing because you made it sound like until the budget passes, you can't make those determinations.
I can make determinations, but we have to pass the budget, and then, once we know that we have to cut 75 grand, depending on what the number comes in on the health insurance, will depend on what further cuts that I need to make. I have possible cuts ready, depending on what that number ends up being after we know what is coming off from the health insurance. We've budgeted X amount of dollars for health insurance costs, and it isn't done yet? We have to go to...
That Board, we're part of a consortium, consortium for health insurance. That Board hasn't voted on premiums for next year yet, so we have a budgeted amount and a target for the Board to vote, but it's still a Board of six other districts, and we'll meet and vote to determine the health insurance premium rates. And that happens when? Tomorrow morning. Okay. Okay, so I understand that, but you're still making it sound like you're not certain you need to cut 75,000. And isn't, isn't that what this is about?
The budget, if it passes right now, is 75,000. It has to be cut for the town budget.
Okay, because that's not quite what you said. I just want to understand.
I'm happy to clarify. Thank you.
Maureen Pearson, 82 Millington Road. Thank you for your time and dedication. I certainly appreciate it as a member of this community and taxpayer. I also feel that it is a great error to cut the school so dramatically when they are the future of our town and our country. Cutting teachers is a mistake. I think we should cut the $300,000 that Irene Haynes has designated for trees, cutting down. To cut down trees, that's 300,000 you could immediately give back to the budget and give it to the education. There are ways to cut your budget, Irene, and you haven't given us any. And what I'm afraid of is that you would push through a higher mill rate, the way you did last year, with no vote at all. And I would like to know how we can avoid that, because an increased mill rate needs to be voted on.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Good evening. My name is Abigail Martin. I live on Mount Perniasus Road, and I am a senior here at Hill Ray. It truly devastates me that after the numerous meetings I've spoken at, and regardless of the amount of parents, teachers, or community members that advocate for the schools, nothing seems to change. We are stuck in this cycle of recognizing the needs of our school district, and rather than meeting them, we continue to ignore them. The time has finally come, and we must face the consequences of perpetually underfunding our district. I look at all of you Board of Finance members and cannot recall a moment in the last four years I have seen a single one of you in this building. Ironically, I only see you all here at these meetings where you attempt to cut our funding. You all come to these meetings and sit in this auditorium, ignorant to the fact that the curtains you all sit in front of took four years to finally repair, or unaware of the fact that these lights have been broken for half of the year. It is arbitrary for you to all benefit off what has taken us years of fighting forward to achieve. It seems to have... It seems to escape you that the positions you hold are public offices, meaning you are here to represent and act upon the will of your constituency. As town residents, the students, parents, and community members that advocate for education are, in fact, your constituents. Yet I can't help but recognize the fact that after years of advocating, you continue to ignore their pleas. To ignore your constituents and attend these meetings with a fixed mindset, believing that you hold the right position, unwilling to listen to others' views or ideas, is a level of self-righteous arrogance that is simply unjust. I understand and empathize with the fact that budgets are not easy. However, if you plan to ignore the citizens you are supposed to represent with your positions, I urge you all to either reflect or resign. Education is the future of this world, and continuing to ignore its importance or the implication quality versus poor education has on children is, quite frankly, irresponsible. While all of the citizens speaking here tonight deserve to have their voices heard, so do the students your decisions will impact. In my AP Lang class, we actually spoke about the previous meetings and the current status of the budget. In fact, students were passionate about writing letters for today's meeting. With that said, I am here to deliver letters from students regarding their thoughts and reactions to the current circumstances. I hope that you take all of these voices into consideration when you make your decision regarding the value of education.
Hi, I'm Curtis Rodowitz, 318 East Haddam, Colchester, Turnpike. My wife's also in education, she's a guidance counselor in East Hampton. So they're dealing with similar things, and I applaud many of you for going through the process of working through budgets and trying to accommodate each of the taxpayers' different viewpoints. So I'm just, at this point, going to share mine. As a father with two daughters currently in the school system, obviously you can see my attention is focused on the school systems, but it always has. So in terms of the funding, it surprises me that we're looking at cutting $500,000 from our education budget. And on top of that, when you look around the school systems and what actually needs to be put into them, just to maintain the infrastructure, these aren't major capital improvements that you're talking about. These are things that are just normal maintenance repairs that were never part of the budget originally, that should have been. So that way, you wouldn't have capitalization, large capitalization costs that are actually in there. So when I look at the budget and look at what's been going on with this, as a nursing facility operator, I know how tough it is to work with budgets and try and work through those things. But when you look at what we're doing at this point, we are not prioritizing education. We're prioritizing our entire government budget over our education. And that actually, that upsets me. And I know it upsets many of the students that go to the, all the different schools, and, you know, from elementary all the way up. And I just want to make sure that our voice is heard in a sense that we wanted to see, I would rather see those things restored and other programs and capital programs removed from the fiscal budget on the government side to accommodate the school system's need for the education and programs and their reinvestment in infrastructure in the actual buildings themselves. Thank you.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Catherine Turnowski, and I live on Leesville Road, and I'm a current senior at Hillray. To be quite frank, I find it upsetting that myself and my peers have to urge our fellow community members time and time again to preserve our right to a well-funded, academically fulfilling education. To hear that there are both board and community members who believe that the students could not have an intrinsic motivation to fight for their education and are rather merely puppets for some adults in our community is truly disappointing and invalid. Without the ask of any adult, I've watched a livestream of board meetings to educate myself on the state of my town's finances and have spoken multiple times at these budget meetings. After myself and other students spoke at the last public hearing, to hear from a Board of Finance member the contradictory statements that, quote, "We represent the town," and, quote, "I heard nothing that dissuaded me from the position I took when we made the original budget proposal," in the same breath is disheartening and undermines the very principles of meaningful public participation in our democratic system. Us students hold a deep appreciation for our education and are aware of the opportunities at stake. It will continue to advocate for our school's right to sufficient funding until it is reflected in the budget. I applaud the board's efforts to accommodate the needs of our community members. However, the painfully blatant disregard for the true importance of our schools is glaring in how the allocation of our town's budget has been handled. The well-being of students and faculty alike are threatened by your actions. So I urge you all to consider the ripple effect of turning a blind eye to the indisputable needs of our education system and how these actions will have irreparable consequences to the entire town. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Melanie Cole at Clark Gates Road. I received some correspondence that I wanted to read on behalf of one of our teachers who couldn't be here tonight. My name is Meg Dedman. I am a teacher at Nathan Hillray High School, and I thank Melanie Cole for speaking on my behalf. We lived in East Haddam for nearly 17 years before moving to Montville. I became a teacher after moving here, and my children went through the East Haddam school system. Before moving to East Haddam in 2005, we lived in Fairfield County. The schools were very large. My high school graduating class had over 300 students. We chose this town because of its rural character, the close-knit community, and its school system, small schools with big hearts. While living in East Haddam, I observed the workings of the budget process from a few angles, as a parent, as a teacher, and as a town resident. Over time, the weary pattern repeats. The Board of Finance and the Board of Education frequently tussle about how much money it takes to educate our students, maintain the upkeep of our schools, pay for teacher-staff salaries, and adhere to mandates. It comes down to dollars and percentages. This works in theory, but not in practice. A town person previously mentioned the importance of generating revenue to offset educational costs. That makes far more sense than cutting funds from an education budget, but it is time-consuming and complicated endeavor. Instead, the focus is now on the schools, perhaps the most important factor potential residents consider when choosing a place to live. Teacher-to-student ratios have come under question in light of decreasing enrollment. This is a national trend. Our ratios are similar to other Shoreline schools. High school class sizes vary, but we strive to offer as many options as possible based upon the diverse learning styles and interests of our students. This is especially challenging for our town that does not generate a wealth of revenue and is not regionalized, rather, with other towns and schools. For those who believe that teachers are overpaid, I beg to differ. I worked in marketing for nearly 15 years and chose to take a 50% pay reduction to become a teacher in 2011. I have no regrets. To say the work is meaningful is a colossal understatement. I have never worked harder or been more proud than I have been here at East Haddam. Like parenting, it is equally demanding and fulfilling. It's not about dollars and percentages. It's about students. They need us. And with that, I would hope that the Board of Finance, whose meeting right after this meeting, would take time, maybe pause, maybe take a moment, and read all of the letters that those students have now given you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Webster. I live on Tater Hill Road in East Haddam. I'm a mother of two children in our school systems. I'm also the Social Services Coordinator for East Haddam Youth and Family Services, but I'm here tonight just wearing my parent hat. I want to thank the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance for all of the work that you have done in trying to create sustainable budgets for our town and for our schools. I understand that it is thankless work, so thank you for doing that. But what I do want to say is that I think we need to be having another conversation, and I want to piggyback on what the previous speaker just said, which is, instead of continuously attacking our Board of Ed budget and slashing it to bare bones, we should be really talking about how to raise more revenue in our town and solve the problem of our, you know, tax base being predominantly landowners absorbing all of the costs. We should be talking about how to create a little bit of industry, increase our business. Instead of just basically targeting the Board of Ed continuously, over and over, my oldest child is in 4th grade. I've watched this process every year. It hasn't changed, which tells us all something, that it's not working. We just keep, we're like hamsters in a wheel. So I think we need to start thinking outside of the box, and I hope that the voters, maybe who are watching from home, are listening to this so that we can change this conversation, look at our situation differently, and try to figure out where we can gather resources so that we don't have to continuously slash the Board of Ed budget. Thank you so much.
My name's Jim Franchese. I live on Wickham Road. I got a couple of things I just wanted to ask folks to think about. First of all, being a Board of Finance person is probably one of the least thanked jobs on the planet. And this year more than ever, it's probably a complete no-win. You can't make everybody happy, and you probably can't make anybody happy. I used to make a joke, I was an assistant principal for a long time, and I used to say, "Well, I know I'm doing the right thing because the kids, the teachers, and the parents all hate me equally, so I must be doing something right." I'm curious, how much do we spend annually on debt service, especially if you have it, for open space areas that we invest in constantly in this town?
Valerie, could you answer that question?
I don't have that number readily available. If you check our last audit, there's a debt service schedule, might be like page 100. I somehow have memorized that. And so it will show you our, some of our debt service. I can also send you an email. Sometimes the audit just labels it differently than we do, and it might not designate exactly open space, but I can take a look at it and send you an email if that helps.
I would be grateful. You could send it to me, my BOE mail, if you want.
Sure.
Or you could send it to me at home, jimfranchese@comcast.net. I don't really care.
Sure.
The reason I'm bringing it up is that I spent a lot of time in education. I spent 20 years in administration, including district-level positions. And it's very clear to me that this town has suffered from a constant habit of not doing what it needed to with capital. Until now, we're in a crisis where we're trying to do everything we have to do with capital, which is generating a need for a whole lot of bonding, which is going to cut into the budget, because we got to pay the debt service. Now, I don't think they're wrong to do the work. I think people before them were wrong not to do it in schedule. You know, you say, "This is what we do every year, and you get it done." You don't wait till it's a crisis. I don't, I think one thing people don't understand is that when a school is essentially underfunded for a period of years, like this school system, there does come a point where it starts to become a crisis too. We will eat the $500,000 cut if we have to, and we'll make it work. That's our job. I'm terrified if the budget goes down and somebody decides, "Well, that's because we need to take another $500,000 out of the budget," because then you're looking at havoc. Then you're looking at real problems. And I'm just asking people, a lot of people here are talking about the budget and saying it's good to support education. Go out and vote for this budget when the time comes, because if you don't and it goes down, they will come after the Board of Education's budget again. They will assume that that's the only answer. And the truth is, in every one of these old towns, the Board of Ed budget is the largest single thing the town spends money on. It's incredibly labor-intensive, with highly-trained professionals that do have to earn a living and get paid. And it's always the biggest chunk, and that makes it always the biggest target.
I don't want to be quoted to the exact numbers, but of the $3.25 million of annual debt service, open space is 300,000, tippity tops, and I think that's high. So athletic...
It's not that big of a...
It's a, the municipal office building, the athletic complex, the heating HVAC improvements that we recently did and so on are by far more than the debt service on open space.
Thanks, Harvey.
You're very welcome. And if I'm off by a bunch, I apologize, but I believe I'm roughly accurate. Thank you, Harvey. Somebody's going to say something down here?
I just wanted to concur with Harvey, that his estimate is probably right on target with the amount that we have in debt service, with 300,000 being on the high side. But I can still email you, Jim.
Thank you, Valerie.
My name is Shaina Ang, and I live by Sunny Brook Drive, East Haddam. I am a senior at Nathan Hillray. I am not only speaking this as a student, but as someone who has personally experienced the difference that a strong, supportive, and well-funded education system can make in a young and impressionable person's life. As an immigrant, I came to this country when I was eight years old. I started school here in 3rd grade, and from that moment I arrived, I was starting to learn English while also adjusting to a new country and culture. I was fortunate enough to attend East Haddam School, where I was given the opportunity to have a hands-on education which helped me learn and grow. The amount of content I learned in just those two years would later give me an advantage. When I moved to Middletown in 5th grade, I immediately noticed a difference in the quality of education. The school system there did not offer the same educational opportunities and did not challenge them. Students weren't being pushed to their full potential, and in many cases, they were being taught, they weren't being taught any valuable and meaningful lessons. I was recommended to a magnet school, however, I was not any smarter than any of my peers. I was just more knowledgeable because of East Haddam had given me an education that truly made a difference. I am disheartened and disappointed to hear about the recent decisions made by the Board of Finance regarding the budget cuts of our elementary, middle, and high schools. I have carefully watched and analyzed the video from the Board of Finance meeting on April 8, 2025, where one of the members said that the board has spent dozens of hours listening to the community. While I sincerely appreciate the time and effort invested in these discussions, I must respectfully question, are you truly hearing us? Are you genuinely comprehending what these cuts mean to citizens, parents, and most importantly, the students of this town? As a senior graduating in less than two months, it would be easy to believe that this is no longer my issue. However, I care about the students who come after me. I believe that they deserve the same opportunities that helped me get to where I am today. I often hear that young people are the future of America. If that is true, then why are the resources that students need to succeed being taken away? Why are young adults expected to provide solutions when their opportunities are being stripped away? I am proud to be a student at Nathan Hillray High School. I am proud to say that our school creates an environment where students are encouraged to grow and are supported by teachers and teachers who genuinely care. Our small class sizes foster not only academic success, but also compassion and understanding, which are qualities that are essential for fostering responsible and empathetic citizens. Reducing budget cuts are going to create larger-sized classes and fewer resources that will not only hinder learning, but also create unnecessary stress on our teachers. The Guidance Department is another vital part of our school community. Personally, my counselor, Mr. Little, has supported me in countless ways, academically, emotionally, and preparing me for college. Reducing the budget cuts, reducing the budget puts essential resources like these at an all-time risk and will have significant impacts on the students. I understand that the rising cost that towns like ours facing, however, education should never be the first place we should turn to when minimizing costs. I urge you to find another way to balance the budget without taking away essential resources from the students. Cutting the budget may seem like an easy solution, however, be mindful of the long-term effects that will be damaging not only for the students, but for the entire community. The students of Nathan Hillray care deeply about this town, including myself. I am involved in many community service clubs, such as Nathan National Honor Society, where we organize events like Blood Drive and Trivia Night to bring people together. I am also part of Straight From The Hearts, where we students have prepared Thanksgiving meals for the elderly. As the president of Tri-Music Honor Society, the chapter and I have organized the Haunted Walk and wrote over 70 handwritten thoughtful holiday cards to the elderly of Cheslin. I am also a part of the Drama Club, where we provide entertainment for the community. We students have never given up on our community, nor our seniors. Then why should our town give up on its students? During the April 8th meeting, a board member said, "Nothing made me feel that our initial decision was an error. If I was wrong..." If I was wrong, smile about it and prove me wrong. I, Shana Aang, stand before you, smiling, not out of disrespect, but out of the hopes and determination to respectfully prove you wrong. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Jeff Walter, lifelong resident. My father served on the Board of Finance in the 60s and 70s. I have, you know, the arguments aren't the same. They haven't changed in 50 years, okay? What has changed, and there's been a lot of discussion in the Board of Finance the last few years about stop kicking the can down the road, let's start facing up to the issues that the town has. I am a public finance attorney. I have done probably six or 700 municipal bond issuances in the last 36 years. I served as Democratic Town Committee Chairman. I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been a member of and have chaired the last two, a member of the most, of the 1980s version of the charter commissions, charter study committees, and the like. I have read, I have annual reports at home dating back to 1954. I pull them out all the time because people ask me about history and all that. I have read every town audit for the last 35 years, all right? I've never been a member of the Board of Finance. I have watched every meeting, even the Saturday ones, because the easiest thing for me to do is have something clear in my head while I'm working at night on loan documents and the, and the like. For the first time in my life, I am concerned. And just to give people a perspective, we are using $2.6 million out of our unassigned fund balance in this budget. And there's reasons for that. I'm not sure exactly what the fund balance is. The last number I saw on some, on the notes I have, I think it was like $7,164,000, I think. That hadn't been finalized by audit yet. But taking now $2.6 million, that gets us down to about, you know, five or whatever. And I think, you know, the town fund, the town requires by its fiscal policies that we have an unassigned fund balance of 8% to 15% of the total operating budget. I assume the 13-point-whatever percent number that I've seen in minutes or heard in, you know, is not based on the $44,540,000 operating number. It's based on last year's budget, okay? So if you actually do some math, which I've done, that 13 million, the 13% is really about 11.4%. And if you add $500,000, which is the Board of Ed cutback, and the $75,000 back, you're going to be down at like 9.1%. The town is now bonding for things it has never bonded for. Now, it's probably appropriate. We have clients that bond for all their fire trucks. We've never bonded for a fire truck in my lifetime that I can recall. We've never bonded for roads, and we probably should. But it's time, you know, and I think, you know, the woman who spoke on the other side of the room about, you know, a bigger-term community discussion, we are right on the edge. Without that 2.6 million, and if you raise it to 3.1 or 3.175 to cover the cuts that we've, you know, we're talking about, you're talking about like a 4.87% mill increase for this year. And this room would be much different in terms of who's here and who's not here, okay? My fear, and, you know, we are where we are, and we should, my recommendation is that we proceed, because the 2.6 or whatever, you know, we haven't spent it, you know? But to give people a sense of the magnitude of 2.6 million, the largest number I've been able to find in terms of use of fund balance to defray operating expenses is like 1.1 million, which was two years ago, and 585,000 or 65,000 of that was the mill rate adjustment from the prior year. For most of my life, it was zero. And if you explained to my father, or maybe, you know, Mr. Gilson can say his father, about using the fund balance for anything other than funding reserves and things like that, which is what used to be done, you would have been run out of the Old Town Hall, okay? For, from like 2012 up to like 15, 16, maybe 17, it was like zero. And then it went to 100, 100, 300. I think it went up to what, a million for one year, 2021 or whatever. But that number is astronomical. It's bigger than I think I've ever seen outside of a city, like Bridgeport or Hartford. From a small town, and I, you know, and I watch, we represent seven or eight of the small towns in our immediate vicinity, they have never used a number like that. So I hope that educates everybody. I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done, but everyone should understand the ramifications and the like, because if we start getting down to 9.1 with some of the bonding that's planned for things like two new fire trucks, which we are, you know, I don't think anybody argues we don't need, the roads, when those referendums come around, maybe they get turned down, and then the ability to say dip into the unassigned fund balance to pay maybe for one fire truck has been gone, has disappeared in this budget. So I just want to give some perspective really to everybody.
Thank you.
I spoke last time on a parent. My name is Wade Tomlinson, River Road, near Gillette Castle. Thank you for the fire department showing up. I've heard a lot about the education, but not about other folks in our town. It just deserves mentioning that we have other folks, folks who may be facing cuts as well. And here's what I'm going to propose. And I'm just, I'm disappointed that I keep talking at these things and I don't see actions. I've said in the past, I'd love for us to dream big and then see, find ways to meet the challenges in education, maybe creating an IB program, an international back laureate, and then trying to fund that. Special needs kids, fund that. And then I'm having to hear tonight, oh, we're going to cut a cafeteria worker. I mean, come on, we can do better. Here's what my proposal is, as an imagination, and I don't know what the bylaws are for East Haddam, but instead of a yes and no vote, how about this? What if we actually fully funded everything that's being asked for tonight? And that's option A. And you might have to increase the mill rate, whatever. Here's the budget for fully funding our fire department, our education department, everything else. Option A. Option B is this. And I'm willing to bet, I am willing to bet that our citizens in this town will choose option A. I know what sign I would have in my yard. My sign would say something to the effect of no cuts. I think what I'm hearing tonight is more and more people talking about education and our, our future. I have two kids in the, in the system, and I want better. And I want a fully functional ambulance and fire service. We've had fires in this town, devastating ones. It's time to deconstruct the dam. And what I mean by the dam is all these repairs, all this painting, as I heard you say, all this stuff is coming due, and we're not doing it. We've created a dam, and the water level is rising higher and higher. And once it reaches over the dam, that's what I heard from the gentleman over here, that's when it's crisis. Stop. Deconstruct the dam. Let the water flow. Fully fund what we need as a town. Second idea, and I said this last year, we need solar panels on all these things. One of the big budget items is paying for utilities. We're just throwing money in the toilet. Put damn solar panels on these schools, on every municipal palady. You could even open it up to some rich person, because the rich person will take advantage of it so they can get tax breaks. So they will fund it, we pay them a minimal amount, and think about this, instead of paying utilities that rise every year with solar panels, it stays constant for 30 years. Just a couple of ideas to consider, again, thinking outside of the box instead of always inside the box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Brown. I spoke at, at the last meeting. I'm a senior at Hill Ray. I live on East Haddam Colchester Turnpike. And I started last time by saying that I respect that it's difficult to create like a fiscal plan for this whole town. I recognize that that's difficult. But at the same time, like, to anyone who reads the news regularly, it would be obvious that America as, as a, as a nation is sliding towards anti-intellectualism. We're taught to not trust our teachers, to think that college is bad. It's, it's really an issue. And, and small stands do matter, I think. Small stands in this town can matter. Our teachers and our students matter, but I think that it's evident that the board, by the, by the disregard on, on your faces, that you don't really care. And I think that that's incredibly concerning, because people do care, and it just doesn't matter because you don't. So I would, I would urge you to reconsider, although I fear that I will be sorely disappointed. And that's, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Live on Neptune Avenue. I was appreciative of, I don't have quite the same experience that the folks before me were speaking when it comes to finance and fiscal policy and things like that. But I do have a degree in finance and work in the financial industry as well. So I'm a little bit more familiar with budgets and things like that. And I've done my best to do my research to become more familiar with how the government side works and, and going through the years of budgets. I have to say that, that my request is somewhat similar to what some other folks have been saying. I do applaud the, the folks that are fighting for the schools and, and the education. I can't speak to that because I do not have children, and so I am of the other two-thirds of town without children. So I unfortunately can't really opine on it, other than to say, of course, I know I had a wonderful education and wonderful opportunities, and I think it did really well for me. And I would hope that, you know, every child would get that opportunity. However, what I am proposing is solutions. I'm looking for a way for us to all find operational efficiency, to find ways to maximize what, you know, resources we do have. I moved to this town because of its natural beauty, of its history, of its location, and the resources, and how beautiful the town was. I don't want to see it built up commercially to appease tax burdens. At the same time, I understand expenses are going to continue to go up. I would like to see some, maybe opening it up more to the town for opinions. We have a website. Could we possibly, you know, there's people that have these backgrounds that may have some familiarity that could possibly assist with looking into things and seeing how we can utilize what funds we have in a better way, instead of seeing increases in overtime or temporary personnel, to see, you know, budgets being spent to take care of certain parts of the town. And then when that doesn't happen, we still have that burden, but now we don't have the money. So I'm not sure, like, so it seems like maybe we need to be more frugal about where the money's going, and, you know, solar panels are an option. That's going to have a lot of expense too. It's not without expense, right? There's a lot of upfront expense, there's maintenance, which is, so it's not going to be negating expense altogether, but it's, it's sustainable. You know, whereas what's going on with Eversource, I don't think that's sustainable. And while people are, you know, struggling, I think we are going to keep struggling as well. Thank you. I just think that maybe if we open it up and, and reach out for assistance, maybe we'll get some advice that could help everybody get what they want. Thank you.
Thank you.
I used to microphone. Sorry. Ruth Massey, 51 Davison Road in Mudus. First of all, I have to give kudos to all the students here. I'm an educator elsewhere, and I just have to tell you that you guys really stand exactly for East Haddam schools. You stand for excellence. You're here, you're speaking out, you do so eloquently, and I think that really speaks to exactly what we're all here talking about as far as our education, so thank you. I'm really impressed by that. Secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the town side of the budget. As it's been pointed out, we really don't have any details about that. The reason I'm concerned is because last year, not very long after passing our budget, our Department of Public Works had to get rid of employees. They were over budget, they didn't have the money. Honestly, I appeared before the Board of Finance multiple times, and I asked questions. I asked where the money went. I asked why we didn't have the money. I was told I was barking up the wrong tree. I was told I didn't have to be told that information. I never got an answer. So I'm standing here before you tonight to tell you, I don't know that I support a budget that the town cannot tell us exactly where the money's going. The Board of Ed, you do a great job. You lay it out, you tell us where the cuts are, you tell us where the spending is. Now I hear you're cutting teachers. I think that's terrible. I understand, though, hard decisions had to be made. On the town side, we used to have the Department of Public Works do the paving. Who does the paving now? Outside companies. They used to cut the trees. Who cuts the trees now? Outside companies. Why is that? I'll tell you. You don't have qualified people running that department. You are throwing money away. I've been telling you since July, and everyone sits, and they nod, and they smile, and you continue to shuffle your papers. That's where you're losing money. So, I'm back. I told you I was going to be here. I was happy that there were no new vehicles, considering all the vehicles that sit in garages. Some guys have two trucks per person. Why don't you sell some of those vehicles? Give some of the money back to the schools. It's time to get creative, and it's time for the town side of the budget, Ms. Haynes, to be transparent. It's time for you to take a look at exactly how these departments are being run and where our money is going. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here comes somebody again.
Again, Denise DiStefano on Town Street in Mudus. It was suggested at the last meeting that on the ballot, there'd be a question if you vote against the budget. Is it because education should be raised, or because it's too high? Is any of that going to happen? Has there been a decision?
No, there hasn't been a decision yet. We have discussed that. There's several ways to, what you're asking for is get a read on why the town voted the way they did, so we can make a wiser decision next time around. And there's various ways to do it. We're trying to figure out which is the most accurate way to do it. And we don't think that would be one of them, but to answer your question simply, we need to continue to discuss that and make a decision on that.
Because just like the last meeting, the overwhelming sentiment is in great support of our education department. My son is well out of school. I will never have a kid in the school system, but I will always support it and think it's worthy of our investment, because it is our tomorrow. So I'm still really upset that they have to make a $500,000 cut, and the cut on the town side is so small comparatively. I understand it's the biggest expenditure that we have as a town, but it's also the most important expense we have. most important expense we have. So I think you really want to put something on the ballot if you possibly can so that you can determine easily if the budget fails, why that is, so you know what to do going forward. So you're not just spinning your wheels saying, well, maybe it's that, but it's really this and you plan for that and it gets voted down again because it was this and you weren't prepared for that. So it seems a real missed opportunity if we don't do something like that.
Yes, we're having the same discussion and thought we're just not done with it yet. There's a few more ideas we want to evaluate before we make a decision.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry to come back up. I just, again, Curtis from East Adam Colchester Turnpike. On that same issue there in terms of breaking it out, I know other towns will do it where they're saying yes, too high, yes, or no, too low, or vice versa. And given the option that's on there, I'd also recommend the percentage be within the statement as to what the budget is in comparison and that there was a reduction on the education side or an increase, what the percentage increases in that budget. I know that it gets more costly to have it be lengthy, basically outlining the cuts. But generally speaking, I would expect that we would take advantage, full advantage of the opportunity to know that when the town is voting either for the budget or against it, that we either are saying that one component of it is too high or it's too low. And I definitely stand in support of that and that should actually be on the next, when it comes to for a referendum.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, that looks like it. I have a point of order question. The young lady gave us a packet of letters. Should they be read now at the public hearing or should we read them at our meeting soon after the public hearing? Say again, read them now? Yes, I agree. Okay. So I will. Okay, neatly bound. But, okay, how many we got here so we don't miss anybody? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. A healthy dozen. So I will begin now to read them. This one has no name on it?
Then we don't need.
Say again, I can't hear you?
Some students were able to acknowledge whether or not they wanted their names to be out there. So their sentiments remain the same, but their names are left.
So we really shouldn't read them with no name?
You can read them on their own and not read them out.
Okay, thank you.
They can't be part of the public.
That's right. Okay, so I will put them over here. All of them have no names? Oh, okay. We'll read them on our own. But we can't do that either. No, we can't. Can't do anything with them. So, all right. There's still, no, there still is no name. We need acknowledged representation from the speaker or the writer. This is the public agency and we are elected by the public and we have to respond to the public appropriately. So we can check with our attorney, but I don't think we can read them anyway. Say again?
I can give you permission to be read them.
Well, that's, oh boy. Unless you can do it right now, while the public hearing is in session, but we're going to adjourn the public hearing in a few minutes. We can read them? Oh, okay. I didn't think we could. Okay, all right, solves that problem. All right. I'll begin. As a student of Nathan Hill Ray High School, I attended the recent Board of Finance meeting on April 8th, 2025. I was left unimpressed by the conduct of several members of the board. In my brief remarks at the meeting, I recognized that it's not a simple task to make a budget that accounts for all people in the town. You have to set priorities in any small town budget. What I failed to see is how your priority could not be with the students of East Adam. The United States is shifting towards mass anti-intellectualism accelerated by the brazen attempts to disband the Department of Education. This misplaced fight against our educators will inevitably have disastrous effects on this country and some schools will be left behind. Let's not allow the East Adam Schools to be among them. Your cool disregard for students and teachers whose lives can be significantly altered by these cuts is disturbing and unfitting for a town official. We are lucky to live in a state like Connecticut that provides one of the best educations in the country, but your behavior threatens to tarnish this reputation. I acquiesce that the schools have not always used their money effectively. Our school doesn't always meet the standards it needs to, but that makes these cuts all the more dangerous. They threaten our science department, our agricultural department and our counselors, and that's just at the high school. Larger class sizes water down science and elective courses and overworked counselors will have a real effect on the student body. These classes actually have a profound consequence on people's lives. People who have yet to have their shot to be successful in the world. Don't deny them the right to an equal opportunity in an effort to help lean town government. This behavior will drive people away from our town as if they had much reason to move here in the first place. I won't rely too much on anecdotes to prove my point, but you heard people talking at the meeting and cuts like this will actually drive people who already live here out. Our town needs to offer a better education because we are limited in what we can offer. These cuts will reduce the influx of people into this town. I have witnessed these schools change lives and I can, and we can exploit that to make our town a better place. We can pull people instead, you can pull people in instead of pushing them out. The world changes and if you wish to serve in a government on any level, you have to change with it. Allow our town to grow. Allow the next generation to thrive. Let the people who affect, who, let the people you affect help you make your decisions. Once again, I acknowledge that budgets are difficult to manage. They demand a range of skills that all of you clearly demonstrate. I would only request that you use these skills to make a positive impact on the town. Find the maturity you so painfully lacked at the recent meeting and reconsider your decision. Think about how you represent our town before you make comments about our schools and about those who bravely and righteously challenged you. I know there are those among the board who want to make the right choice. Don't let anyone else hold you back. Don't give up ground. Defend our schools. I will see you on the 22nd. My name is, and along with many others, I am a concerned student regarding the possible determinations or determinants of a $600,000 budget cut. Hill Ray has been a school for me where I have always felt welcome and cared for. Some of the teachers I have met at Hill Ray are some who have impacted my life in more ways than describable and ones I will never forget. Not only have I been taught by some of these tremendous teachers, but I have joined clubs that some teachers run and I've even seen myself grow as a student specifically thanks to AP courses. The wide variety of Hill Ray always keeps me on my toes each year. I can't wait to decide my courses because there is so much to offer. There are days when I get to go from writing, learning about how to plan for my future and taking pictures all in one day. Some classes, specifically digital photography, have helped me find passion in other things and even been able to take photos of things I love. At Hill Ray, there is never a day where I feel like I don't grow, whether it is preparing for my future or focusing on the now. There is never a dull moment. The varieties that Hill Ray has have not only helped me to discover new things about myself, but they even have, they even have me step out of my comfort zone. As someone who is not a big animal person, I had the privilege to take an animal class where I was able to have hands-on experience with an assortment of animals, an experience I likely would never have had if it wasn't for that class. These class options go far beyond helping me through, help me though. Many students have been inspired to take on their own business as well. Businesses ranging all the way from baking to landscaping can be found by Hill Ray students. Some students have even been granted job opportunities and have been able to discover new paths they want to take in the future. But the school is so much more than the classes it has to offer. The schools are building filled with teachers who constantly have each and every student's best interest at heart. They guide us through all our daily tasks while not only making us better students, but people as well. But besides teachers, we have our administrators who keep our school running on the daily and maybe even more importantly, we have our school counselors. Our school counselors are what keeps the school afloat. They organize schedules and are there to talk to students and do so much more. Hill Ray additionally offers clubs which allow students to take part in events within the community. Students have had opportunities to make food for those at the senior center and even bring gifts to less fortunate kids leading up to the holidays. There is not a part of Hill Ray that goes unnoticed, unaccounted for. Every aspect of the school is what makes it so special. It is a place where students are able to grow and become themselves in the most crucial years of their lives. With budget cuts upcoming and even current students who will be stripped of the opportunities former students once had, they'll be unable to experience the variety that makes Hill Ray, Hill Ray. With budget cuts, the school would not be the same as it is today. Although some may say our school isn't perfect and it doesn't need all the funding it receives, the many opportunities the school has to offer is what creates a sense of community and makes our school truly special. Dear Board of Finance Committee, hello, and I hope this letter finds you well. My name is, and I am a senior at Nathan Hill Ray High School. Recently, there's been a lot of debate surrounding the budget cuts that are upcoming at the school and I wanted to give my opinion on it. I hope the committee will listen to my thoughts and consider them. As someone who takes a lot, who takes lots of advanced classes, honors AP, ECE, I know firsthand how the useful these classes are. The most important part of them is their small class size. With the small class sizes, I've been able to receive personal attention whenever I was struggling and in turn produce better grades as a result. When class sizes are bigger, like my AP pre-calculus one last year, I have a lot of trouble focusing. In fact, since that class was so big, it was actually the worst I've ever done on an AP test. This is why I heartily recommend rehiring the teachers that are retiring. With fewer teachers, the remaining ones will be struggling a lot more with the increased workload, reduce the amount of elective courses and be able to give less individual feedback for their classes. I believe it's unfair for the students to receive a lesser education because of the unwillingness for the board to rehire. Relating to the AP classes, I hope that the tests will continue to be free for the students that are choosing to take the tests. As a senior, I know there's, that there's a lot of financial worries and pressures that are floating around within this final year. Kids, including myself, have to work extra hard to pay for things like college applications, sending off SAT, AP scores, and most importantly, and many are saving up to pay for the incoming college fees. I know that finances regarding this area are a struggle for a lot of people and being able to take several tests for free are very helpful for those that want to minimize their college debt. As for myself, the tests that I have taken have already saved me thousands of dollars in college. It's one of the things that I really love and appreciate about our school and I know that any student taking an AP course is grateful for that also. Therefore, I hope that cutting this area is not and should not be considered in future funding discussions. Finally, I just want to talk about the importance of education. East Adam says that it prides itself on their education. So why is it that there are huge funding cuts when there are more students than ever? Education especially now should be the priority of the town. It shouldn't be about saving a couple of percentages on taxes. It should be raising a generation of young minds that will change the world. I hope that the board has opened minded the people's voices and as I know that that hasn't been the case recently. Without considering the voice of the people, there is no point in having a town board in these town meetings. Please consider what I'm saying. What I have written represents the view of so many within my school. Although I may be leaving the school soon, I know the importance of education. It's this school system that has built me to become the person I am today. So please take what I have said into consideration. Thank you. To the Board of Finance Committee, April 11th, 2025. My name is, and I am a senior at Nathan Hill Ray High School. I am not only writing this as a student, but as someone who personally experienced the difference that a strong, supportive and well-funded education system can make in a young and impressionable person's life. As an immigrant, I came to this country when I was eight years old. I started school here in third grade and from the moment I arrived, I was trying to learn English while also adjusting to a new country and culture. I was fortunate enough to attend East Adam Schools where I was given the opportunity to have a hands-on education which helped me learn and grow. The amount of content I learned in just those two years would later give me an advantage. When I moved to Middletown in fifth grade, I immediately noticed a difference in the quality of education. The school system does offer students the same educational opportunities and did not challenge them. Students weren't being pushed to their full potential and in many cases, they weren't being taught any valuable or meaningful lessons. I was recommended to a magnet school, however, I was not any smarter than any of my peers. I was just more knowledgeable because East Adam had given me an education that truly made a difference. I am disheartened and disappointed to hear about the recent discussions made by the Board of Finance regarding the budget cuts to our elementary, middle and high schools. I have carefully watched and analyzed the video from the Board of Finance meeting on April 8th, 2025, where one of the members said the board had spent dozens of hours listening to the community. While I sincerely appreciate the time and effort invested in these discussions, I must respectfully to question, are you truly hearing us? Are you genuinely comprehending what these cuts mean to citizens, parents, and most importantly, the students of this town? As a senior graduating less than two months, it would be easy to believe that this is no longer my issue. However, I care about the students who come after me. I believe that they deserve the same opportunities that helped me to get where I am today. I often hear that young people are the future of America. If that is true, then why are the resources that students need to succeed being taken away? Why are young adults expected to produce, provide solutions when their opportunities are being stripped away? I'm proud to be a student at Nathan Hill Ray High School. I'm proud to say that our school creates an environment where students are encouraged to grow and are supported by teachers who genuinely are, care. Our small class sizes foster not only academic success, but also compassion and understanding, which are qualities that are essential for fostering responsible and empathetic citizens. Reducing budget cuts are going to create larger class sizes and fewer resources that will not only hinder learning, but also create unnecessary stress on our teachers. The guidance department is another vital part of our school community. Personally, my counselor, Mr. Little, has supported me in countless ways, academically, emotionally and preparing me for college. Reducing the budget cuts, reducing the budget puts essential resources like these at an all-time risk and will have significant impacts on the students. I understand that rising costs, I understand that the rising cost that towns like ours are facing. However, education should never be the first place we should turn to when minimizing costs. I urge you to find another way to balance the budget without taking away essential resources from the students. Cutting the school budget may seem like an easy solution, however, be mindful of the long-term effects that will be damaging not only for the students, but the entire community. The students of Hill Ray care deeply about this town, including myself. I am involved in many community service clubs such as the National Honor Society where we organize events like the blood drive and trivia night to bring people together. I'm also part of Straight From The Hearts where we, where we, students, where we students have prepared Thanksgiving meals for the elderly. As president of the Tri Am Music Honor Society, the As president of the Tri-Am Music Honor Society, the chapter and I have organized the haunted walk and wrote over seventy handwritten thoughtful holiday cards to the elderly of Chest Hill. I am also a part of the drama club where we provide entertainment for the community. We students have never given up on our community nor our seniors, then why should our town give up on its students? During the AP meeting, a board member said, nothing made me feel that our initial decision was an error. If I was wrong, smile about it and prove me wrong. I, I have a name here. I have a name. Okay, well, I got a few more lines to finish it. Yeah, stand before you smiling not out of disrespect, but out of the hope and determination to respectfully prove you wrong. Education is the foundation of our society and the most valuable investment we can make. I urge you to reconsider your decision and consider the impacts that these cuts will have on our students. Thank you for your time and consideration. There's a name here. My name is Abigail Martin. Abigail, is the same thing you said to us on the microphone? Okay. My name is Abigail Martin. This is to the esteemed Board of Finance. My name is Abigail Martin. I'm a senior at Nathan Hillray High School. I have spoken at three separate town budget hearings. There are some points I cannot get across with, with a three-minute time limit, so I write to you all in this letter. I understand and sympathize with the difficult decisions you all have to make regarding the town budget. I recognize there is a level of balance that must be accomplished between the Board of Education, while also understanding what the tax base is able to afford. With this said, I do not find the disrespect towards the Board of Education necessary nor effective. Conflict and disrespect will not help us make progress. However, I find it critical that you all listen to the perspective of a student. I write to you all in a final effort to get the Board of Finance to understand the importance of education, especially in East Hattam. A key issue I have with the decisions of the Board of Finance rests on the fact that many members are incredibly estranged from the school district. In the time I attended East Hattam Schools, I have never once seen any of the, any of the Board of Finance members. So I ask, what makes you all credible to be making these decisions? I believe that if you are going to cut the school budget, should at least, you should at least understand the gravity of your decision. In this letter, I hope to give you all a little insight as to what our schools have given me and how it has helped me grow into the person I am today. I am seventeen years old and have been an East Hattam resident my entire life. Even before I attended our schools, I attended a daycare in town and consequently made a lot of my future, met a lot of my future peers there. My family would visit the town library every Friday and check out books for the week. I grew up going to church, in fact. I attended St. Stephen's Church with Bill Barney. Even at this young age, I was involved in different aspects of our town. When I turned five, I enrolled in the East Hattam Elementary School. I flourished socially and academically as much as an elementary student can. I continued to stay involved in the school as I also participated in Little League. This played a critical role in my social development as I was on teams with many of my peers and established a community culture in school that spanned across grade levels. When I went to middle school, I was placed in a gifted and talented program. It is through this program that I was able to be exposed to the debate team, math team, invention convention and Lego robotics. We were challenged to take, to think differently and pushed to achieve more than others. In the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, we were, we were tasked with completing a project for National History Day. Exploring a historic event that addressed the prompt, addressed, it says prompt, of the year. In the seventh grade, I did a project on the Pequot massacre and created an exhibit for my project. In the November snow, I scoured different parks looking for birch trees. I peeled birch bark off trees and created an accurate model of a Native American wigwam. Was this a requirement of the project? No. Many people simply presented a trifold, yet our school pushed us to go beyond what was asked. As a result, I placed in states for this competition. It was in the same year I began to build strong relationships with my teachers. When I found myself struggling with mental health, I had a support system of adults in school to turn to. At a time when I, where I struggled to feel safe, it was my seventh grade English teacher, Mr. Anderson, that I found security in. At our schools, teachers go beyond their job description and truly do care for the students. Many students spend more time at school with their teachers than with their family. We all have established a strong support system that I couldn't imagine my life without. It was through Mr. Anderson that I grew a passion for English education and had the goal of pursuing education in the future. I could only hope to make a difference in students' lives the same way my teachers have made a difference for me. When I went to high school, I thought I would struggle to adjust. I couldn't have been more wrong. In the past four years, I met some of the best teachers and had more opportunities than I could have ever imagined. It was here I, it was here I believe I truly grew into the person I am today. During my time at Hillray, I've taken nine accelerated classes and seven AP classes. Not only have I been challenged and earned college credit, but I can also say that I've learned, I have never learned more. At many schools, students feel as though they memorize information until the next test. Hillray is lucky to have such great educators as I have never once felt this way. I am able to recall information from classes I took two years ago. Simply because of the manner in which our students are, were able to effectively convey material. Even the most challenging and academic classes, we have built a community and family. I have participated in several organizations and clubs such as National Honor Society, Straight From The Heart, Youth Helping Youth, Yearbook Club, Unified Sports, FFA, Jazz Band and Student Council. I've been a president of my class for all four years. I was vice president of FFA, treasurer of our chapter of NHS. And I have taken on various other leadership positions within our school community. Additionally, I have built a connection with each one of our teachers. While some are stronger than others, there is not one person in building I would not feel comfortable turning to for help. I can't recount the amount of times I've cried over graduation simply because I couldn't imagine leaving Hillray and all these incredible people behind. With that said, it is through my experiences and opportunity as the Hillray that I know I'll be ready for whatever comes next. During senior year, each student was responsible for completing a capstone project with the purpose of exploring different careers we may be interested in. Consequently, it's through the opportunities to take part in debates, take on leadership, leadership roles and even advocate in town settings such as a budget, such as budget meetings, that I have found passion for justice and law. Excuse my throat's getting, my throat's getting dry. My time at our school has helped me grow into an independent and confident person. For this project, I reached out to the chief district attorney of Connecticut and explained to them what my goal was. I was then placed with the Connecticut District Attorney in New Britain, Christian Watson. I was able to shadow him and even sit in on a murder trial. Arguably, I would not have, I had the confidence to do this if not for the support of my teachers and the person they have helped me shape, shaped me into. Unless you all can confidently say that you are aware of all of the opportunities I have spoken upon this thus far. It is ignorant of you to cut the school's budget unaware of what it will, of what it will affect. I have volunteered at town events run by the schools or youth and family services. I have volunteered at local soup kitchens. I work at daycare with children that will eventually attend the East Hattam School District. I have remained involved in this town my entire life and not once have I seen any of you board members. So once again, I ask, what gives you the right to strip opportunities from a community that, from a community that you have no involvement in? It is easy to sit at a table and talk about the school's test scores or student-to-teacher ratio, though not accurately representing our classes. You hold town hearings in the high school auditorium. Little do you know that the curtains have been ripped and tattered for four years. For the entirety of this school year, the auditorium lights have not worked. I have two different classes in the auditorium and for months we have sat in the dark. It was only in the past few weeks that the lights were fixed and consequently it was then that the Board of Finance held a meeting here. There is a level of self-righteousness that allows you all to be ignorant to the needs of the schools and students. I have been forced to advocate for my own equal opportunity to education. It is obvious that pacifism is getting us nowhere. My love for education and the many people that have changed my life for the better overwhelm, overwhelms my instinctive thought that this is not a matter I am qualified to speak on. In fact, there is no one more qualified to speak on this matter. I have lived in this town for seventeen years. I have continuously been involved. I have been a part of a community within this town. Some may wonder why I'm so passionate about this, especially given the fact that I am graduating this year. So any cuts made will be, will no longer affect me. However, I have spent years building relationships with teachers to the point where I'm not only advocating for the future students of East Hattam, but I, but I am standing by our outstanding teachers that have stood by me countless times. As members of the Board of Finance, you all occupy a public office and therefore tasked with accurately representing your constituents, the citizens of East Hattam. Regardless of my age as an East Hattam resident, regardless of my age as an East Hattam resident. I am one of your constituents, one of the people you should be representing through your actions. I recognize that you also must represent the elderly of this town. One argument we make is that this demographic is on a fixed income. Yet the truth is almost everyone is on a fixed income. The only way people are able to make money is by taking on more than one job. My family's income is not growing. We are paying tuition for my older brother and soon for me as well. While we understand that the eight percent increase will raise our taxes, we have enough perspective to understand that this is not the only, this is not only necessary, but beneficial for children in this town. As students have pointed out, there are no businesses in this town, which only increases taxes since our town is not bringing in any revenue. Additionally, the lack of businesses creates isolation and many children do not have opportunities outside of the schools. This is all, this is all students have access to and you are all trying to reduce the already lackluster opportunities even more. It is not the responsibility of the Board of Finance to accurately represent the, the will of the people. Oh, it is, it is the responsibility of the Board of Finance to accurately represent the will of the people they represent. This is no new concept. In fact, it is the foundation of the nation. Frustration grows when people feel unrepresented by the people in office. These feelings are not exclusive to the federal government. They are equally as relevant and in local government such as this. Parents, teachers, students and taxpayers have all spoken at meetings advocating for education. For some members to make the claim that nothing said has swayed their opinion revealed great truth. It showed that you have preconceived biases and a closed mind. This is a dangerous mindset to have when holding a public office. You must be open to new ideas and respond to the will of your constituency, constituency. If people speak advocating for change, it is your responsibility to change direction in a manner that represents their will. Last page. In the last few pages of this letter, I have attempted to provide an ounce of perspective. I hope that by being able to hear a firsthand account from a student and a child of the community, you're able to begin to get insight on a demographic you may be, you may be estranged from. I now leave you with my final plea. Self-righteousness, arrogance and closed-mindedness paired with anger will not enable us as a community to move forward and will only create conflict. People that are willing and passionate enough to voice their concerns deserve to be listened to and represented as much as those that don't. If a community, if as a community, we don't, we can't establish unity and mutual understanding and respect, we have nothing. Understand the importance of education. Understand the impact your decisions will make. Understand the fact that the generation this will be impacting will once be the future of now, of not only our community, but of the world. I call upon you all to become more involved in the community you are supposed to represent. Without this, your decision will have no substantial basis and will be misguided. We must stop this vicious cycle of underfunding programs and ignoring the consequences that come with such. I appreciate the time you all take to listen to citizens in public hearings and the time it takes to read letters and emails. I hope that these words go further than your ears and alter your, and alter your insensitive, apathetic thinking. Especially as a board consisting of many previous educators. I would hope you understand the importance of education and the impact quality educate, quality educators can make in a student's life. While I may disagree with decisions made, I thank you for your continuous efforts to serve this town. And I hope you all make a decision that you feel comfortable standing by as the fight for education will never end. Representing your constituency, reflecting the honor of your position, this is not a decision that can be made lightly. But the Education Department cannot take any more cuts. With that said, I thank you for your time and consideration. Do not let pragmatism erase your sense of humanity and empathy. We are all people. Dear Members of the East Hattam Board of Finance. I am writing respectfully, I am writing to respectfully urge you to reconsider the proposed budget cuts to our schools, specifically Nathan Hillray High School. As a student who has been in this school system since I was in preschool, I care about my future and the futures of others in the school system. I am concerned that these cuts will reduce the quality of our learning and disallow students to engage in activities in classes they enjoy. What kind of message are we sending to students when we take away the tools that allow us to grow and succeed? What happens when a teacher cannot be hired in place of another? Not because there is nobody qualified, but because there's simply not enough funding. These are not simply hypothetical questions. These could potentially be reality. With these cuts that are currently being considered, we may lose access to classes that involve agriculture and hands-on learning such as floriculture. These classes are what sets us apart from other schools as other schools do not typically provide these classes. The fact that we have access to classes that inspire students to work in agricultural fields and figure out early what they want to do makes this a big identity of our school system. We also may be left with just one guidance counselor in the entire school, attempting to assist one hundred-plus students in the high school. How is one person meant to provide adequate support to all these students? Navigating letters of recommendations, college admissions and course selections? It is simply impossible. And this is why is it a big deal for these positions such as another guidance counselor to be hired again? Every student within the school deserves access to an enriching education. Every student deserves teachers who are supported by their employers. Every student deserves the opportunity to explore diverse subjects such as agriculture, a huge part of our community. Cutting these displays the negligence of this budget cut. Please do not cut funds from our schools. Do not take away opportunities for eager students. This isn't simply about asking anymore. This is about advocating for our futures in this school district. Thank you for your time and for considering the voice of the students who will be most affected by this budget cut. Alongside the teachers who work hard to ensure the students are supported. Sincerely, a student at Nathan Hillray High School. My name is, and I am a junior this year at Nathan Hillray High School. I am deeply involved in the school community as an officer in the drama club, a varsity, a varsity runner in track and cross-country and a member of Straight From The Heart, future Business Leaders of America and a partner in the Unified Sports. Academically, I'm enrolled in four AP classes. I took two last year and plan to take three more next year. I love this school and care about my classmates, teachers and the courses I get to take. As a student highly involved in this school, seeing that my success depends on the resources the school provides, I am directly impacted by the budget cuts and feel compelled to offer my perspective. First, I understand the difficult situation you are in. These are challenging times and taxes can take a toll on the community. I also recognize that you have to balance many different opinions and voices simultaneously. However, I find it insensitive to put a price on education and to treat it as just another financial cut without considering the human impact. Education is priceless. The experiences I've gained in this school are the building blocks to my future. My teachers dedicate their time and resources to help me, to help, helping me succeed. For example, my AP language teacher, Mrs. Perry, provided extra SAT practice materials for the reading and writing section of the SAT. They helped me score one hundred points higher when I, than when I took the PSAT in the fall, placing in the eighty-third percentile in that part of the exam. In, in AP US history, my teacher, Mr. Johnson, can give specific feedback on essays and classwork that prepare us better for our exam next month. Smaller class sizes allow my teachers like Madame Plante in AP French to provide an individualized help which is so important in difficult classes, courses. This personal and one-on-one aid isn't only found in AP courses, but electives like art. This personal and one-on-one aid isn't only found in AP courses, but electives like art. Well, the art teacher, Mrs. Bat, takes the time to help every student grasp the concepts of art. Through her programs, I and many other students have grown and strengthened their art exponentially. Mr. Latanzi in his math course is able to help students one-on-one to understand theories and complex equations. Mrs. Grandin, an accelerated chemistry teacher, has time to help students with projects and give feedback on tests for corrections because of the small class size. These teachers can connect with students and provide personal support because they are not overwhelmed with large amounts of students and too many different classes to teach. In addition to smaller classes, the, the school also offers a wide variety of courses. Budget cuts could also reduce the number of selective classes being offered, limiting the students' opportunity to challenge themselves and explore subjects that support their interests in future careers. AP and accelerated courses prepare students for college-level classes and help them have better chances of getting into competitive colleges and programs. One of my classmates, for example, was accepted into the summer program Yale Young Global Scholars at Yale University, a selective program that only eighteen hundred students got into annually, I'm sorry, that only eighteen hundred students get into annually. She was able to stand out from other students because she was able to take AP courses and be involved with honors programs like National Honor Society. Without access to these classes and clubs, our students will be at a disadvantage when compared with students from better-funded schools. It is callous to overlook how positively this glass size, the class sizes and diverse courses impact the students in the school system. Field trips also will, field trips will also be at risk within, with the proposed budget cuts. The excursions students get to, to attend are so important to the learning experience. Students are more likely to resonate with the learning when they get to visit the United Nations Headquarters for Model UN and when they get to tour the Metropolitan Museum of Art for AP Art History and AP US History, for example. These firsthand experiences engage students more and help them remember the, their studies. If budget cuts confine lessons to just classrooms, then students will miss out on important real-world experiences, real-world experiences needed to help them thrive and love what they are learning. The budget cuts will greatly have, impact the programs and clubs of the school. One major aspect and appeal of the school system, mainly regarding the high school, is the wide variety of programs and clubs available. Each club that I am a part of has helped me explore potential careers and expand my interests along with my resume. These clubs not only help the students, but they support the community as well. For instance, Straight From The Heart cooks Thanksgiving dinners for community members and Future Business Leaders of America, holds bake sales, and also teaches us to be better leaders, strengthening the younger generations and preparing us for the future. Unified Sports, coached by Mrs. Kozuski, promotes inclusion and team-building schoolwide with events, with events such as our annual staff versus the Unified Team Basketball Game, which is a highlight of the year for many, and the Unified Team playing basketball at halftime in the Mohegan Sun Arena during the Boys and Girls State Championship Games. Also, the Unified Team was recognized as a national unified champion school this year, which is a huge accomplishment. These programs benefit the students, staff, and community overall, and by cutting funding, we risk losing these incredible opportunities, reducing the support for our programs. Not only will hurt the school systems, it is insensitive to ignore the, it is insensitive to ignore the important role they play in building an inclusive, empowered, and well-run community. Sports and athletic programs are also vulnerable to these cuts as they have, as they already have limited funds. Budget cuts will lead to fewer options for sports, missing out on opportunities like being able to afford buses to track and cross-country meets, for example. Sports are such an essential part of the school experience and it's important to have students up and moving around. Sporting teams develop leadership, physical health, and pride for one's community, which are very much needed in today's world. Finally, I remind you that the youth in this community who attended these schools will soon be voting for the future members of Board of Finance. The students of East Haddam will remember the decisions you make. If you want our support, please support us in return. As Benjamin Franklin wisely said, and I quote, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest," I, unquote, I respectfully urge you to consider the detrimental effects this proposal will have on the youth of our community. The budget cuts will affect students not only in the next few years, but also how seniors get into colleges, standardized test scores, the appeal of our town, and the happiness of our students throughout the school system. Investing in education is investing in our future. There must be alternative solutions that do not compromise the quality of education or jeopardize the futures of the bright and strong minds in our community. Respectfully. Dear Members of the Board of Finance, I am writing to express my deep concern and disappointment with the six-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in our school budget. As a student who attended the Board of Finance meeting on a whim on April eighth earlier this week, I left not only disheartened but also questioning the value placed upon our education and our community. How are we able to, as a town, claim to prioritize a future when we continue to actively dismantle the, the pond which it has built? How can we move forward as a community while actively making decisions that harm the youth in it? The future, not only, the future of not only our town but our country is within this next generation. It is necessary to take their foundational learning in a more serious direction. This budget cut will have far-reaching consequences that will impact the school and adolescents in ways we are not even yet aware of. Larger class sizes, fewer enrichment opportunities, increased workloads on teacher staff, and the reduction of electives are just the beginning. More concrete examples of how this budget cut will influence the young minds of today's society. We should be enriching our students, giving them opportunities for growth, opportunities for finding their passions, and opportunities for them to reach their full potential as a student and full potential as a young individual navigating today's world. The potential budget cuts will affect so many different aspects of student lives that the families of every student will have to pick up the pieces. These cuts will not only affect my generation but generations before me and generations after me. The specific enriching aspects of the school that these budget cuts will redact will get rid of the things that are most important in a student's foundational life. Interactive skills, finding their passions, figuring themselves out in a way that will be attributed to a common goal and central understanding within the society we are trying to foster. Taking away agriculture and science programs will be detrimental to the future where any attempt to fix or alter the climate crisis will be overshadowed by the lack of foundational knowledge. If a student has a passion for, for a subject without resources, the action of potential is killed. Thus, history repeating itself in the lack of societal and individual growth. The budget cuts will only harm students and teach them that the officials will put monetary value at a higher level of priority than their education and passions. This will also lead students to resent the school system and further pull away from learning as a whole, which will not help anyone present or future tense. There will be far-reaching consequences from this budget cut, many of which might not be apparent right now. Larger class sizes, less access to electives and enrichment activities, and more work for already overworked teachers are all possibilities. These are, these are actual setbacks for actual students, not just as a theoretical annoyance. We run the risk of limiting the options open to young people who are still figuring out who they are by restricting their exposure to the arts, sciences, and extracurricular activities. The greater the input, the greater the output, the more information enrichment students can take in, the greater the likelihood of more inventive compassion in students. Reducing the support networks that schools offer is not only short-sighted but detrimental at a time when students are already dealing with increasing stress, loneliness, and mental health issues. As someone who is directly affected by these choices, I implore you to view kids as more than a money sign. I humbly request you look into more sustainable options that don't jeopardize the education of our pupils and evaluate this planned budget cut. The long-term loss of potential cannot be outweighed by the cost of short-term savings. Thank you for taking the time to read this message, message from a young person in today's society who genuinely cares about their education and the direction the world is going. My name is, as a senior at Hillray, writing in response to the recent proposal of the school's budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. I appreciate your time and effort for considering us in your financial endeavors. Although I am graduating this year, many of my peers will be affected, which impacts the future of our community. With the support of my school's amazing educational opportunities, I was able to graduate at the top of my class. Without the education I've gotten at Hillray, I wouldn't be exposed to different cultures and ideas which are attributed to the literature I have read, the history I have learned, and the critical thinking I have acquired from taking numerous classes. I know that graduating at Hillray would equip me to not only be a functioning member of society but make a contribution to it. I now will pursue a degree in engineering, and with the unwavering support I have received from my educators, I was able to find my own passions within the comfort of my own community. Cutting such programs will only deter people like me who aspire to be more than what they are offered. Our town is small, but that doesn't dilute the true value that students have. I've seen friends gain confidence from drama rehearsals, see classes perform groundbreaking labs, and I've seen small clusters of a community grow all because of the cutting-edge programs offered at Hillray. I know many of you have opportunities in your own lives which may have affected your decision-making in our fiscal school year. I know for some, investing in something you're not involved in is not beneficial to you in any medium, but I just want to reiterate that our future is not a financial burden. I am not a financial burden. The aspiring doctor is not a financial burden. The kids who, who only go to school to escape familial, familial issues are not a financial burden. We are not numbers that you chose to skew for your own financial and fiscal gain. We are humans, and I anticipate that the same level of compassion from you, the board, the same way educators have fought for us. Thank you for your kind consideration. Great idea. Thank you. A little water break here for a minute. Nothing like water. So, so does, so does okay, but water is better. That's my lecture for the night. Okay, um, this is from a concerned AP language student to the Board of Finance and the Board of Education. Dear Board of Finance Committee and Board of Education, I write to you in regards to the most recent budget cuts for our district and, for our district. In school, we watched your last meeting. Many of the students that spoke at the meeting shared what they spoke about and provided their peers context for the situation we find ourselves in. Once we understood what was going on, we watched the most notable people speak at the issue. We are happy to see that most, if not all, reflected how we felt about the budget cuts that impact our further education. Then it was all dismissed and ridiculed by a board member who says in, who says in a past candidate profile, "It is not money or resources, it is commitment." The teachers, the students, the parents, and mine. How can you stand by that statement when the cuts you are making hurt the education of these town students? Never mind the disrespect it shows towards the parents and students which you say you have a commitment to, who went out of their way to come and speak before the committee. As a student with a limited perspective, I know there may be other issues and logistics that make the cutting the budget necessary, make cutting the budget necessary. I also acknowledge that there was an apology sent out after the meeting. Note that it, that is very similar to how young students behave, having to send an apology to another student or adult whom they have been mean to. With my limited student perspective, I actually see a lot that contradicts that. I see the classes that students love and look forward to going to. I see them making connections with teachers. I see, see them building life skills, planning their careers and college majors based on their experiences in these classes. Many of these are agricultural and science classes. Students are going to college for forensic science, plant science, horticulture, and some have started their own businesses in town and in the surrounding area. This is because they learn to enjoy the work they are doing in these classes. They benefited in so many ways from these classes. As a student on the inside, I know these things. I see them every day. If you know this already, consider asking yourself, "Why am I hearing it again?" If not, why haven't you gone and sought for yourself? So many, so my fellow students and I don't have to keep repeating ourselves. To my knowledge, no board members, whether education or finance, have come into the high school and witnessed the classes and teacher positions at work that are on the chopping block. While the positions on the committee are voluntary, they are still highly important. As a committee member, you probably feel that it holds some power, otherwise you wouldn't hold that position and care. Being in such an important position means that you need all the facts before you make a decision. Consider the needs of the students. These cuts could harm them and their education far into the future. Thank you for taking the time, thank you for taking the time to read this letter. I sincerely hope this makes you consider your actions when dealing with the funds of our students' futures. We truly love coming to a school more with all our programs, and in turn, these programs make us better people. Dear Board of Finance, it's ironic that our sound, that our town's signs display East Haddam proud of our schools when people are supposed to advocate for our needs or intending to cut the school budget to reduce town taxes. It's easy for people with grown children to not care about the quality of our schools, but I hope you can find it within yourselves to consider the people who are directly involved with the schools or have children in the schools. The future of our community is worth more than any savings that could be created from these cuts. The proposed budget cuts, if they were to be approved, would threaten the quality of Hillray students' education. These budgets would cause an increase in class sizes when small class sizes have been proven to reduce, have been proven to produce high test scores and students with greater general understanding and critical thinking. Reducing facility, no, sorry, I'm getting tired. Reducing faculty would also result in fewer extracurricular activities and fewer electives. If you attended the most recent play at our school, you would have been an eyewitness to the students who gave their heartfelt testimonials voicing their appreciation for faculty members who pour every square, every spare minute of their lives into helping the students in drama on an already pitiful budget. The communities at Hillray may not reach as many people as they have previously with To members of the Board of Finance, I write this letter in response to the proposed budget that would decrease funding to the local school system. As somebody who has been a part of the system for nearly as long as I can remember, I hope what I, I hope what I and my fellow community members say will help you make the right decision. In my time at Hillray High School and other schools in the system, the resources provided by the school created an effective and healthy learning environment for all students. The proposed budget would disrupt this environment and put the experience of the students and teachers in jeopardy. A reduced budget would not allow for the schools to maintain the teachers and staff they have now, and the increased class sizes that will result from this would be detrimental to not only hurt the school environment for the students, but also needlessly put a larger burden on our teachers and the other staff. If you truly do care about the current and future students in this, in this town, along with the teachers who dedicate their lives to preparing them for their own lives, and the other faculty who handle the school's other critical responsibilities, then you will reach the decision that you will not reduce the school budget for the sake of the people of the town. Sincerely. And I believe that's all the letters. Say, is one more, is two more, three more?
We have emails.
Oh, okay, email.
Emails have been sent since we printed them for you.
Okay. Here's two of them, I don't know. Okay. Okay. These are the two, uh, okay, these are from, one's from Randy Dell.
Yep, and then the other one is Kate, yep, and then, um, this one starts down here from Jessica Hatfield. So these have been received.
Okay. I'm being received. So, this one is from Randy Dell, a resident of East Haddam. He doesn't say that, but I know he is. "The budget is too high." I'm sorry, I'm reading the email now, first sentence. "The budget is too high. It must be reduced for the sake of elderly taxpayers on fixed incomes and struggling parents raising families in this town. Focus on the school budget, reduce the capital amount, and, and pull funds from the reserve account, and pulling funds from the reserve account to soften the blow on taxpayers is a dangerous game. Cut the budget." Okay, this is from- Okay, this is from Kathy and Ken Klein, who I believe are also residents. Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Lake Hayward. They got their address right here. Okay. I get all these qualifications discredits because question is email rigid from outside. I gotta read through it. Okay, it's I guess it's very short. What I guess it's a question. What percentage or dollar amount of the proposed budget in areas such as public safety and education are mandated by the state and federal government? Now, they say proposed budget. Do they mean education budget? Doesn't say. What percent does it say? Oh, public safety, education. Got it. Thank you, Harvey. What percentage or dollar amount of the proposed budget in areas such as public safety and education are mandated? Okay. By the state and federal government? Okay, education, what percentage? You have 384 mandates, I believe, something like that.
We have well over 300 mandates. I would have to go through and then go look at them, but just like transportation alone is a mandate, and that is how much? I'd have to get the exact numbers. I can email them to somebody, or Cindy can pull them up, and I'll get back to you.
Okay. So to answer the question, there are a lot, but Patty's gonna get back to you on the dollar amount. Now, for public safety, the town government side, how much is mandated there by the state and federal government?
Todd, we'd also have to look that up and add them all up, but we have plenty of mandates in all budgets.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, these people asked a good question. Okay, I got one more to read. I've read three, so it's the last one.
One more has come since then, so there's.
Okay. That's good. This is the time to do it. Okay, this is from Jessica Hatfield, who I don't know. Yep, she's a she's a from she lives on East Hattam, close to Turnpike. She's definitely a resident. Okay, thank you. Okay, dear Board of Finance volunteers and neighbors, first, I'd like to share my deep appreciation for the tireless work that has been done by every member of every town board who has had a hand in putting together this budget. Particularly for the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Education, budget season is a thankless task, and it is critical that those people know that there are people like me who see the significant effort you put into creating this budget. Thank you for all of your hard work. After listening to hours of board meetings surrounding this budget, it has become clear to me that our problem in East Hattam is not one of expenses, it is one of revenue. Based on what I've heard, there really is no department in our town that is fully funded in a way that supports their needs, forget their wants. I would even go as far as to say that some of these those areas are critically underfunded. Currently, our roads are crumbling, various town buildings are deteriorating, some to the point of being dangerous. Other town buildings are simply inadequate or out of compliance with federal accessibility standards, and the needs of our community members are not being met fully. This incredible town that we have the great privilege of living in is not being cared for the way it should be, and neither are our fellow neighbors with whom we are shared this privilege. And now, despite these those issues, we're looking at deeper cuts for next year. However, we're looking at these deep cuts because many of our town residents cannot sustain much, or in some cases, any more in tax in tax expenses in their own budgets. This issue of individual personal and family expenses is illustrated starkly by the increase in the number of food bank patrons over the past year, as was mentioned in the April 14th Board of Finance meeting. We are in the tightest of spots. We cannot cut expenses anymore than has already been done in this budget. Already, there are so many cuts that I struggle to get on board with this budget, most notably for me as a parent and a person who has devoted my career to supporting the educational pursuits of others. It's incredibly painful to support a budget that forces our schools to cut entire curriculums, which this budget as presented does. If we continue to cut expenses, forego maintenance because of financial constraints, cut programs, cut curriculums, cut necessary supports for all ages, and kick this proverbial can further down the pothole rental road, it will cost us significantly more in the future. We will have to replace instead of repair. We'll drive people out of town, leaving the rest of us to carry their their financial load. We'll encourage parents to send their kids to magnet schools, costing the town more in tuition than would be spent on their education here. We'll create astronomical legal expenses, et cetera. Because we cannot cut further or increase resident taxes higher, finding other revenue sources must be our top priority going forward. It is abundantly clear, at least to me, that this is our only way out of the financial situation we find ourselves in. Attracting more small businesses to our town is one of the many things we can explore and act on to increase revenue. I think that all of us together need to be thinking creatively of ways to increase revenue. Please, dear neighbors, take the time to think of solutions and present them. Finally, to overcome the challenges we face, we must work together as one cohesive team of neighbors. Finger pointing, arguing, and us versus them mentality has only created or contributed to our problems through the years. East Hattam has proven time and time again through our history that when we fight with each other, we only hurt ourselves. One only needs to look at our Mudus downtown area to see what happens when we argue instead of collaborate, and our Rayboard school with our Rayboard school relationship when we collaborate instead of argue. When we work together toward a common goal, treat our neighbors with respect and dignity, listen carefully, and consider the perspective of others, there is no end to our potential. Let's remember that going forward. Thank you, Jessica Hatfield, 159 East Hattam, close to Turnpike. Okay, got numbers already? All right, good.
So the mandated numbers would be 20,224,471, with some of the biggest things being the salaries that were mandated to have for accreditation, electrical. The I'm trying to get to the transportation, including diesel, is 1,544,876, and that is not covering just even special education. And then we have liability insurances that range between 133,703 down to 75,545. So I mean, I can read off the whole list, but I think we're gonna be here for a while. Hopefully, that answers the person's question.
Okay, thank you, Patty. I got one more to read here. This is submitted by Terry Garrity, and who is a member of the Board of Education. She lives in Falls, on Falls Road in Mudus. Okay, this is written to, oh, she's a parent citizen, East Hattam Board of Education member. And, dear members, after hearing the thoughtful comments and heartfelt letters from our students tonight, I feel compelled to express how proud I am of each one of them. Taking the time to speak up in support of our schools eloquently, respectfully, and with real conviction shows a level of maturity and civic engagement that many elder adults can learn from. As a member of the East Hattam Board of Education and as a community member who deeply values public education, I want you to know that your voices were heard and truly appreciated. You didn't just speak for yourselves, you spoke for your classmates, your teachers, and for the future of this town. I recognize that budget decisions are difficult, and that adults in leadership must weigh many competing priorities. But when students, those mostly directly affected, take the initiative to participate in this process, we have a moral obligation to listen. So I ask this: if we find ourselves divided as adults, can we at least agree to listen to the kids? They are not asking for extravagance. They are asking for opportunity, for stability, and for the tools they need to learn and thrive. If we say no, what message are we sending? Not just about the budget, but about whose voices matter in East Hattam. Sincerely, Terry Garrity. That's it, all right. Well, do I hear a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
Todd.
Or something else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I think it would only be right to for we, the Board of Finance, to express our thanks to Ms. Bellis, Ms. Houston, to Dr. DeBrito, to Ms. Stricker, and to the whole Board of Education, and to Ms. Haynes and the Board of Selectmen for making making it possible for us to try to do our best at a not very pleasant, not and very difficult job, trying to meet the needs of the town while respecting the fact that everybody's wallets are not infinitely large. But thank you all for your help and cooperation. Much appreciated.
And thank you to you, Harvey, for being a gentleman.
Well, my mother done good.
She sure did.
Todd, if I could just take a minute and address a couple of things. One of the things that somebody had brought up, actually a couple of people brought up, was solar. We've been actively pursuing solar. The way solar works now with municipalities is you actually rent the space on top of the buildings that are here in town, and there's an actually kind of a bidding war that goes on regarding that. And so far, the space that we have available on top of our buildings and including a possibility of building a cover over our transfer station hoppers would also increase that space that would be available to companies out there. They sell it on the open market, basically the space. They rent it. And so far, it has not been taken advantage of, although it's still out there, and we're still hoping that something happens as far as revenue goes. So that is something that we've looked at, and we've looked at it for the last couple couple, three years now. So thank you for that, you know, that suggestion, and it is something that we are trying to pursue as best we can. There's also even included in that offering to put another solar field similar to the one that Shagbark put up over at the Harris property, which is a, you know, a big town area that, but that's still not big enough to have enough interest yet. We're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that somebody will at some point be interested in it, and therefore we, you know, would gain some revenue. So I agree with a lot of people who said tonight that we do have a revenue problem. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this budget that we've proposed on the town size is an increase over last year of 2.7%. Included in our increase, and it's 894,726 over last year, includes 1,192,670 in shared services. Shared services is a category of expenses that the town pays for. Town pays for it exclusively on the town side of the budget, and three of those people within that five-person, six-person shared services, as well as technology and maintenance, is total Board of Ed expenses. The other thing that the town pays for on the town side is 1.3 million in all capital. So every facility, every building, all the open space, all the all the buildings, whether they're school buildings or town buildings, that's all under the town side of the budget. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is not to say he said, she said. It's just to let people know that when they're talking about the $75,000 worth of cuts that the town is taking, the town has a lot more expenses on the town side that we take to help the Board of Ed in regards to their minimum budget requirement. The higher that budget requirement goes, they have to leave their budget at that level or above it. They can't come down unless there's a serious amount of decrease. So what we try and do is help with their budget by taking that shared services away, and also, again, keep in mind that all the capital is paid for on the town side. On the town side budget is not only just the general government, but also public safety, public works, health and welfare, cultural and recreation, and the fringe benefits. So there's a lot in the town budget, and there's a lot that's included in the town budget that is not included in the Board of Ed. So when we look at the $75,000 cut, although it's not as big as the half a million that's going in for the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed is still looking for an increase of almost 1.5 million over last year, and the town is looking for almost 900 over last year. So we are funding a lot. I wish we could do what Mr. Tomlinson suggested and fund everything. At the same time, we have a lot of people that are not in the room tonight that are asking for budget cuts. So it's very difficult, and it's very hard. I appreciate very much all the students. They did such a wonderful job, and I wish we could pay for everything we could possibly do with education and more. Unfortunately, we still have to meet the taxpayers, and that's 75% of our budget that's paying being paid for. So thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I'd like to say something as well, please remember that on the town side, you also receive over $4 million that is exclusively for the Board of Education, which is not taken off of our bottom line. That includes the Ray Fund, it includes the Purple Fund, the Helen Cone Fund, and all the state and the federal funding. Many towns actually take that whatever their their state funding revenues and take it against our bottom line. So we do not. So I just I want to make sure that people are aware of that as well.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. May I hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Eric moves. May I hear a second?
Second.
Who's the second?
I'm the second.
Okay. Bill seconds. Okay, good. Any discussion before we? Thank you very much for coming tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
opposed.